Very well. Well, welcome everybody and it is six thirty one. Now call to order the meeting of the City of Sandy Planning Commission. This is Monday evening, November eighth, two thousand twenty one. And this is our mostly monthly meeting. Uh, we are conducting this via Zoom. And you can also participate on the phone. And we will give instructions just in a moment when we have some opportunity for public comment as to how you can get your voice heard. But the first thing is to start with a roll call.
Commissioner Carlton.
President.
Commissioner Losowski.
Here.
Commissioner McLean Wenzel.
Present.
Commissioner Maite.
Present.
Commissioner Hook. And so that's a no for now. And Commissioner Lee told us on September twenty seventh that she would not be able to make tonight. So that's an excuse absence. Chairman Crosby.
Here. So that does establish a quorum. So we are good to move forward. We had in our packet the minutes from our last meeting, October twenty fifth. Any corrections, errors, things that need to be fixed that anybody spotted? If not, we'll take a motion.
I'll make the motion. We accept the midst of September twenty seventh.
Okay.
October twenty fifth.
Go ahead, give it to Chris.
October twenty fifth.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded to approve the October twenty fifth, two thousand twenty one minutes as presented to us. Uh, all in favor, give us a thumbs up. And I believe in our crowd, there'd be one abstention.
That would be me.
That would be Hollis because she was not there. Okay, this is the time in each of our meetings, um, when we give opportunity for anybody in the public to just speak to the planning commission on anything that is not on tonight's agenda. And if you are participating via Zoom, uh, just click that raised hand icon. And that will, um, get you recognized and once recognized, um, you can speak if you're on the telephone. You, uh, do star nine and that will effectively raise your hand and then wait to be recognized. Um, if you do speak, um, we ask that you give us your name and your address for the record. And Kelly is the one who is monitoring if there are any guests in the field, in the, in the room with their hands raised.
It's always interesting to know how long to wait on this. Uh, I do not see any hands raised.
All right. How many, uh, do we have people in the room? That's.
Uh, we have five. I know four of them are associated with the application that you're deliberating on tonight. And I think the fifth person is, um, I believe a gentleman that, um, has applied for the planning commission.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, with that said, we will move into old business. Let, we won't. If it's okay, we'll keep our, keep on the agenda that we have since, uh, David is here now. So we'll move into old business, which is, uh, just a review and then I'll turn it over to Kelly. Our deliberations on the Deer Meadows subdivision. Uh, we've had the public testimony, we've had the open record and Kelly will probably explain all that or review it for us. Uh, but our, our job tonight is to just do our deliberation. And basically, um, the ones you see on the screen right now are the, will be the, the participants. So I'm going to turn it over to Kelly to kind of bring us up to speed. Any new things that have come in since our last meeting that you want to make us aware of and the floor is yours.
So before I do that, I actually want to turn over to our city attorney for two reasons. Um, I think you have to make any declarations.
Oh, that's right.
That's and ask if anybody has any issues with the commission being your typical deliberate, your typical, um, request that you make to the audience. Um, and then it disclosing any ex parte contact that happened since September twenty seventh. Um, and I, I'm sure David can elaborate on that. And then the second thing I wanted, uh, our attorney to bring up if he could is the potential um, that there could be participation from the applicant's team. So I just don't want that to be a surprise to anybody later in the meeting.
Okay, go ahead, David. And if you want to be the one to ask for the ex parte and so forth, you may.
Yes, uh, everybody can hear me. Okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. Uh, yeah, so, um, actually the, the, I guess, uh, the one thing you don't need to have, uh, you know, going through the full script tonight, uh, the one thing we would ask is, and I can ask it, that's just fine. I'll do it right now. Uh, has any member of the commission, uh, since the September twenty seven meeting, uh, had any ex parte contacts, uh, regarding this application? And if so, uh, I would ask that you just declare those, uh, for the record. And I will assume that, that silence in this case means, uh, there were none. Uh, and then as a matter of procedure, I'll just, uh, have Kelly, uh, offer, uh, review the, uh, the, the raised hand function to see if anybody has any objection they would like to make to that or make any comment.
That is for the public.
That's correct.
And I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, great. Uh, and so then the second thing, uh, that, that Kelly mentioned, that's really all you need to do in terms of, uh, statements, uh, for tonight, Chair Crosby. Uh, the second thing I wanted to bring up, and I, I, I mentioned this, um, in my, uh, memo, uh, from November one. Uh, so I don't think the planning commission has, uh, dealt with this, uh, particular issue, but as Kelly mentioned, there isn't a, a possibility, uh, that's in, um, uh, state statute for, um, in this case, the applicant, uh, to possibly provide additional, uh, testimony or even evidence uh, this evening. Uh, and so where that comes up is, um, uh, a statute one nine seven five two two and the statute, um, was really kind of modified, um, in its entirety. I want to say back in twenty nineteen, um, and so what it has to do with is basically if the, if the planning commission, a hearing body is, um, going to, um, deny an application. Uh, we need to afford the applicant an opportunity to either propose a condition of approval uh, or propose a change or an amendment to the application itself before you would go ahead and, and make a decision, um, yeah, if the decision were to deny before you'd make that decision. So basically what, where this goes is if in the course of your deliberation, what I would recommend, this is sort of how I counsel other clients with this is that, if you get to that point and maybe Chair Crosby, you're usually, I think, pretty astute at this. If you sort of sense that maybe that's the direction that the, the commission is heading. I, I would recommend maybe doing like a, like a straw poll, just to kind of get a sense of where people are. Uh, and if, if it's, if that's the case, then what I would do is say, okay, for, at this point, you know, before you, uh, essentially have a, a motion, uh, and a vote to that effect, uh, let's, um, allow the, uh, applicant's representative, uh, some time to, to take advantage or afford it, afford the applicant that, that, um, ability uh, to either amend its application or propose a condition of approval. The applicant isn't, doesn't have to do that. They can say, no, we, we just want you to, to rule on the application as it is. That's fine. Then we would go ahead and do that. Uh, if the applicant were to, um, propose a condition or suggest a modification, uh, the way the statute works at that point is that, um, the city has the opportunity then to, um, extend the hundred and twenty day clock. Sort of unusual, but that's the way the statute is written to allow the city time to consider whatever that change or that condition might be. So, um, the, I talked a little bit with, uh, Mike Robinson, who's actually the applicant's attorney, who's actually not here tonight, but his partner, uh, Garrett, uh, is here. Uh, and, um, the, the way that that I think would work out, if in fact, that's what happens. I don't mean to suggest that's where, uh, anything is necessarily going, but if it did, and the applicant suggested a condition of approval, most likely what we'd suggest is, is, um, giving, uh, some time for staff to consider that. It really kind of depends upon what it is. And, um, coming back with an extension of a hundred and twenty day clock, uh, at some point in the future. So, um, that's maybe more, more than you needed, but like as Kelly said, I, I just, it's, it's an odd statute. I don't think the planning commission, you know, has dealt with it and, um, you know, I wouldn't want you to sort of in that moment, sort of feel like what's going on right now. So uh, that's kind of the, the skinny on how that would work. And obviously if there are questions on that, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, David. Um, so I'm going to keep my summary very brief, um, because we, you, you've already heard a, a presentation that I did in September. And we attached the presentation slides as an exhibit for you tonight. So if you had a chance to look at those again, that can bring you back up to speed. Um, and there's a lot of materials in the record, so I don't want to bore you with like details. Um, but just for anybody in attendance, I think it's mainly the applicant, but um, just to remind everybody on September twenty seventh, there was a public hearing and the applicant and city staff both made presentations as well. Um, after the applicant requested a open record period, the planning commission granted it. Um, as my two-page little summary lays out, um, the different dates that we received materials from the public or for the applicant, or from the applicant, or even in a few cases from, uh, city staff. And then they're all contained on the website. Um, the ten items that were received during the three open record periods are exhibits HH through QQ. So those are the new materials that were not reviewed or were not available on September twenty seventh. And then in addition to that, there's a letter from, uh, David, which is exhibit RR. So that, that's something new, that's new information that you did not see on September twenty seventh as well. Um, the staff recommendation for this or my recommendation stays the same as it did on September twenty seventh. The staff report was not modified, um, to address any of the additional materials. Um, and so the motion stays the same. And I'm, I'm sure there's going to be questions of both myself and David as you deliberate tonight. So at that, I'll just kind of keep it at that and, uh, I'll let you guys get right into it.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Is under, everybody understand what our task is now? Where are, we are in the deliberation stage? And, uh, kind of pretend that in the same meeting, everything else has gone on and, uh, what I will throw it out to anybody to kind of get us started. Maybe we can, there's, you know, it's, it's a complex thing. You had plenty of pages to read. And, um, you know, it kind of boils down to three or four kind of sticky points. But, uh, any initial comments that anybody wants to make to, uh, get things going.
Well, I, um, I'd like to ask David a question. I guess, because it has to be one of the sticky points. Uh, what I did today was, um, you know, I built myself a document and it'll simply be thrown away when I'm done, but when you type stuff, you put stuff in your head, you kind of organize and understand. And I went through all of the ten, eleven, um, recommendations, the basic conclusions, if you like, from staff. I did my best to try and locate those and related to code. And then I looked at that code. And I also looked at the applicants. Well, um, you know, rebuttal, if you like, on why they felt that, um, what staff said, you know, didn't apply, et cetera. Just trying to understand it all. Um, and in about three or four different places, uh, this kind of goes to, um, point number six, and the applicant does not propose to extend the barcode to intersect with twenty six. The, in more than one place, the applicant refers to section one hundred dot one hundred in the code. It's called streets generally. Or a fancy word for miscellaneous, right? And, um, it, and, uh, then even worse than that, it goes to, um, gee, exceptions. Other words, the miscellaneous miscellaneous part. And number two, which the applicant refers to, says standards for street connections do not apply to freeways and other highways with full access control. Obviously applying, uh, to highway twenty six. And there's no doubt there's full access control and all of that. Um, the applicant uses this one to say, um, your own code says that you can't require us to, um, build the barcode and connect with twenty six. Um, the way I read it is I guess I don't read it that way. I'd like to ask David for his opinion. It starts off with the word standards. It says standards for street connections do not apply. Other standards to me is how you do something. That makes sense? So when I read that, what it, what it said to me was that in that condition, there was ODOT standards are the ones that we would have to apply to. It wouldn't be some city standards. Whereas to me, the whole statement has to do with the standards by which you build the connection. And I don't get out of that statement at all that it means the city cannot require a connection. What it's saying is, is how you do it. Now, I know there's another argument about the incorporation of the TSP. But I just wanted to, you know, this one, the app was sharing with us that we don't even know our own code. And to me, um, I don't think it means what the applicant tries to say it means. So I would just like to ask David for his thoughts on that.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, uh, Commissioner Carlton. Can you give me, um, I had the code pulled up. It's, I know it's in, uh, one hundred, one hundred, but it's a subsection, just so I can.
Uh, it's subsection G.
G isn't Gary, okay?
G and, uh, two.
Right, okay. Yep, thank you. Thank you. I got it here. Yeah, I think that's, uh, I think that, that's the way that, that we've looked at it as well, the way you've categorized it. Uh, that what we're talking about here, uh, are, um, uh, standards that would, um, really get down to, you know, what the, in this case, the intersection might need to, you know, have, look like. Uh, and for the reasons, uh, you mentioned, um, given the fact that we're talking about, uh, an ODOT facility that the state's, um, intersection standards, uh, would be applicable to how that would be built. So, um, that, that I see it can, I, I read it consistent with, with, um, with the way you do.
Okay, well, I just wanted to, um, there's a bunch of reasons why, um, the applicant is saying they don't need to build twenty six, though they proposed to do it in the previous application. You know, because the way they, um, have the plan drawn and, uh, it's, and it's referred to, by the way, in the, in the, in the findings. And that is that the, the, the backside of lots, I think it's nine thirteen, it might be three through thirteen. Um, would basically be in what the right of way would be that's as currently planned. Okay, and so once those lots got built, then that kind of destroys that access point or that, that routing, if you like, for, um, to mark when it makes that all, you know, more difficult. So, um, you know, there's the, you know, there's proportionality. They talk about that. They talk about incorporation of the TSP, you know, et cetera. I was just trying to sweep that other one out of the rug and kind of get to the ones that might be the ones that are important.
Yeah, that, that makes, that makes sense. I think, you know, obviously there's, uh, a, a significant amount of, of, um, uh, of issues here, disagreement about the way that the code is structured and what it says. Uh, and, um, you know, in a, in a perfect world, uh, you know, we might not, you know, have as many, it would be a little simpler to kind of drill down on these things, but, uh, that's the way that planning often works certainly. Um, and this is hardly unusual. So, you know, I think it's a good idea in terms of, uh, if, if you want to approach, you know, some of these issues that way, uh, or, you know, other commissioners in terms of questions, um, that, that makes good sense. I also don't mean to suggest that you need to go through every, you know, criteria. That's, that's something you rarely do if ever. And, um, you know, this, this, this application would be no exception.
Well, you know, as I looked at the recommendations, you know, there's the, the two big hitters and that's basically this plan or that plan has not been quote formally integrated into the code, whatever that means, anywhere from the water master plan to the um, parks plan to the transportation plan, to the comp plan, on and on and on. Um, and then the parks, parks issue. Um, because all of the others are kind of the things we normally deal with, you know? You know, uh, you know, we think that there should be a hundred and fifty feet here and they're saying, well, we don't think so. But to me, staff can kind of resolve that. To me, those are not, you know, things to fall down on a sword on. So just to try and, uh, uh, make sure our deliberations are maybe as honestly as short as possible, but as focused as possible.
Which section was that again? You said one hundred. Is that seventeen one hundred?
Yeah, I think seventeen, seventeen dot one hundred dot one hundred. It's called streets generally. Um, yeah, I got re-familiarized myself quite, quite well with the code. Um, all day today, you know, I tend to do that. Um, uh, you know, because my memory is short. So I'll go through it all the day of it and it's all fresh in my mind. Um, uh, one thing, uh, I guess I will point out, I don't know if any of the other commissioners, uh, saw, but I also I appreciated appendix exhibit X, which is relatively long exhibit is a letter on February eighth. Um, um, on this that was, um, provided to, to staff where, um, at least based on the, the, the attorney's account, applicant's attorney's offense, gone through the entire seventeen section of the code and is highlighted in yellow. What they think is not clear and objectives. And they've also identified places where the comp plan or where that, that's referenced. So with all due respect, I think it's a great start. You know, I mean, Kelly, I know, you know, it's, um, you know, having to look at that and basically do it, but at least from their standpoint. So that's what I did. I looked at every section that is in contention. I looked at what they said. And so I got all those words kind of figured out. Um, really helped me understand it. So anyway, I'll turn around. Ron's got his hand up. So Jerry, maybe let him talk.
Go ahead, Ron. You're muted.
Thank you, Jerry. Chair Crosby. I'm official here. Um, I'm in a, first of all, I can't thank Dawn enough for going through all the, the weeds and details and figuring that out. I'm, uh, look, it's like taking a little different angle in terms of deliberations. And that is what strikes and this is the, I'm gonna call it the spirit of the code. And I've been doing this for, I don't know how, for, uh, back in a dozen years. And all that time that I've never seen anything like this. Whereas things have been called into question. I'm not there obviously. But going through the technical points and weighing them, I don't really feel as us as a public body is, that's our job. Because again, we don't have that skill set to do the, the level that, uh, David goes through. And, but I think we should approach it from, again, called the spirit of the, uh, the spirit of the code. Does it meet that? Because I could go through, I think, anyone of us who go through different sections and and pointing out where the code could be better. And now we're putting on this label where clear and objective, there's many instances where we have that. And we go through and correct these things that, that have been brought up. Then there's just going to be another one. So I think us, or as a commission is, is, is again, is the applicant following the spirit of the code? And with the technicality, was this put into the TSP? Were it exactly right? I don't know. I would rely upon again, the, the city's attorney to advise us on that. I believe it was. All right, or is the different points? Again, the applicant in the first sub bill last year had the debacle connection. It had the park lens in it, et cetera. So what has changed on that? I'm not sure what the underlying reason is. But everyone else that comes before us, but again, think of all the applications that we never see that staff just deals with. And they apply the code. It never comes before us. And now this revelation that these things are not clear and objective. Again, I think every, I think all of us would agree that there's several points that could be more clear. That could be more objective, et cetera. And yes, we should work to make that better. That's just for being in society. But to go through here and spend whatever time we're going to and technically go through and do it, I don't think really that's our job. So I'm growing is, is I, is the application in the spirit of the code? I don't believe it is. And again, um, going point by point, I'm just trying to raise it to a little higher level on it. But I'll be glad to work along with the commission on however you see the approaches. That's just my thoughts and thank you.
Thank you. Kelly had your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention a few things that I probably should have mentioned at the beginning, but, um, so I think either approach would work just fine. Uh, the approach mentioned by Commissioner Carlton or Commissioner Losowski. Uh, one thing I will, so if you look at, um, the letter from our attorney's office in the record, I think it's RR. There, you know, getting more parkland has been an objective of the city in this neighborhood for decades. And the Parks Board has requested it through it, through an exhibit that they, or through a letter that they submitted into the record. Um, the applicants of the previous three or four proposals on this site, plus even the current applicant, we're all proposing parkland. And even as pointed out by our city attorney's office, they believe that based on seventeen eighty six and the quantitative code provisions that we can make parkland dedication a requirement. So if for nothing else, I think it's a pretty strong reason, um, for denial of the application. So I guess what I just wanted to remind everybody is, I think Commissioner Losowski is right in the sense that I don't think if, if you are, and I'm not trying to say you are leaning towards denial or not. But if you are leaning towards denial, you don't have to hit every single point that the applicant brought up. You can, you can point out the main two or three reasons that you think we should deny the application. And that's how we'll apply the denial. Um, on, on the flip side, if you want to prove it, we'll have to go through and, um, make sure that there's anything outstanding that you would want to see conditioned and then ask, you know, the applicant. But that, I think there's a couple, two, two different ways to get there. And I don't think you have to, and David can correct me if I'm wrong. But we don't have to go through every single reason for a potential denial. You could base your denial on a couple of big of the reasons and we could go from there.
Okay, thanks, Kelly.
Or even. I was gonna say, not a, not a couple of things. It could just be one thing.
Right. I mean, I agree with Ron a hundred percent. I just wanted to clarify since I, about the fourth time I, I read, um, I read through the, uh, applicant's attorney's letter where they went through every point, uh, that the staff brought up. And by about the, you know, fourth time I saw that, I said, you know, in my read of the English language, I don't read it that way. So at least I wanted to. So at least I wanted to clarify that because the I agree a hundred percent with the idea of the parkland. They can talk about integrating it or whatever, but you know, you read that section, I believe seventeen eighty six. It's very clerical. It says you got to do it. Our council has said, maybe because of the way things are, we can't tell them where to put the parkland. But the fact that, you know, it's available, and I also agree with his comment that just because of there is a decision which happens to be binary, doesn't make something, you know, not objective. I think that one alone might do it. I do think, though, that the 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 debacle connection is one we should talk about and and take a position on. Since I've been on the commission and since Vista Loop South was proposed, how many remember Vista Loop South? We have had an objective. The city, you know, is is interested in conductivity. After all, look at what they're doing on three sixty second. You know, there's actually at one time, you know, we said development pays for itself, and they wouldn't be doing what they're doing. Now they're gonna build it and then try and reimburse themselves. So if, you know, debacle. I thought that was the most overriding thing that should have had approval of the previous application. Council didn't look at it that way. That's okay, the water and the bridge. But I think having David help us, I'd like to understand better. If we get rid of this one hundred, you know, seventeen one hundred one hundred argument, you know, what's the other argument? And I think there is a difference here from the prior prior one. The prior one, they were planning, you know, more be on the site. They were planning, you know, the multiple multiple units, whatever lot that is, the one there on the you know, anyway, the point was there was more being done, plus they were moving the commercial. And, you know, it was a proposal for the entire site. So that's why I said the proportionality or something like that might figure into it a little bit. But the reason I think that's so important is if this were to go through and those lots were to get developed as they are, it really puts a wrench in to be able to continue that conductivity. And so I I hope that's a message the council gets on that, because I am also leaning towards denial for nothing else, the park. But I'm also, given my time on the commission, I'm pretty vested in 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 idea of the connectivity and getting debacle. Taking care of particularly if the developers on the other side of the highway do go through, but like, you know, Kelly's, you know, you folks approved that revised one. The other, a quick question, David, I had, maybe this isn't what you want to talk about, but the was is the prior development on this land, was it appealed to Luba? So is there any thing hanging on the prior development is my question?
It was appealed, but the appeal was essentially what we call stayed. So there's been no no action taken on it. We haven't, you know, submitted a record, et cetera. The the applicant did that, I think, out of the possibility that the city would reconsider that decision, but the city chose not to do that. So I want to just, I guess, make one point clear, and maybe this is more just in terms of underlining it for this record. You know, the other application is the other application. That's not, you know, before the commission tonight. I I wouldn't encourage you to spend too much time speculating about, you know, why this one might be different in terms of what's being proposed. And the biggest reason there is just, you know, there's been discussion in the record. I mean, there's all sorts of things we could point to about the differences. So it's I I don't think there's a problem with the commission, you know, to sort of recognizing that, you know, there are some differences. But we also want to be sure that we're confining our discussion tonight to this application and the evidence in the record before you relative to those criteria. So with that, I I I think the the issue that that Commissioner Carlton is sort of alluding to is I I see it in sort of what I guess I would call steps. Maybe that's the way I think about it. I'm not sure if that's really the right term, but the the question of whether the in this case, the the T S P and and the codes requirement to have streets that are what I'll call consistent with or or follow the the city's official street plan. The debate there between staff, city and the applicant does get down to that issue of is that sufficiently that standard if if the, I guess, there's sort of two issues. Is that sufficiently incorporated for us to to apply that standard? And then I think it's a second issue is is the the official street plan actually clear itself as to what that is. That's sort of the first threshold of just whether you have authority to to require the connection or not. And so how we resolve those issues would just be a question about, does the city's code require this connection? The issue of proportionality is basically in addition to to that, and that's that's not really a question of state law. That's one of those issues that gets back to, for those of you that have been on the commission for a long time, are familiar with. It's been a little while since we talked about it, and that's a good thing, but the the whole Nolan and Dolan decisions that were back in, you know, the early mid, I guess, late eighties, early nineties. It's been a while now, but that's where you get into the proportionality issues, and that's that's really ties back to constitutional considerations. But the example I like to use there is if the city has passes that sort of first step, right? You believe that ultimately the requirement to have the connection to twenty six is in the code and is can be applied. Then that that's where that sort of second step comes in terms of saying, you know, what can we compel an applicant to actually build? So but I if you don't get past, you know, if there's if there's a requirement, but there, you know, the application doesn't show any any street connection. We aren't really getting into, at least from my point of view, of proportionality exercise because there's really nothing to measure. Anyway, there hasn't been anything proposed. So it it really just becomes more of a question of does the does the code require it or not? I think it's it's a really, I would love to tell you, but I can't that I think there's a clear answer on whether the T S P in the in the street plan is something that's incorporated into into the code. I I think that it's in in my mind. It's a reasonable question. There's been cases that have have made most recently some some really sort of tight standards in terms of saying if you have a a standard in a a comprehensive plan, you know, how specific we need to be, a city needs to be when they go to incorporate that standard. But I I guess, you know, the more the most I can say is it's 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 a it's it's a pretty close call, I think. What I would get back to is that kind of consistent with what Kelly said earlier, the the, you know, the the street plan is the T S P is where you would find that. It's a document that state law compels us to to draft, requires it is a comprehensive plan. A portion of the city's comprehensive plan. And so you know, it's it would be difficult to to think about where else one would find the official street plan except for the the T S P. But, you know, as ever, and this is a task for, I guess, a future day, but a lot like Commissioner Losowski said, it's it's a little bit like sort of you could you writing this and getting it so it's more clearly incorporated or more clear and objective is is a is a difficult task and one that you know, often leads to just more questions than it does answers. That's just kind of the reality of the situation. So I think, you know, for me, the the incorporation piece on the T S P is not as clear of an answer as the 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 park issue. Simply because of the way that the code is written. But I I certainly think that, you know, it would be more than reasonable to say that it is incorporated and therefore, you know, the an applicant would have to in this case, show a connection. And, you know, that can obviously be challenged, and we'd see where that goes, but I I don't know if that really answers the question. It's just one of those that's more difficult to to really say categorically yes or no.
Hey, a hand up from Commissioner McLean Wenzel.
Yeah, I just I have kind of a more general comment that I I'm feeling like first of all, things don't come before the planning commission unless they're wanting to bend the rules, unless they're wanting exceptions. And and the whole approach of we're not asking for exceptions, none of your rules apply to us or you know, it's it's it borders on ludicrous to me, but you know, this idea that your transit plan, your comprehensive plan, your parks plan, your T S P, I mean, none of it appeals, none of it applies to us. Because of this clear and objective thing, and I feel like when things are brought before the planning commission, it's because they didn't pass the smell test. They didn't just go and get they just didn't move along because there were some problems. And so when they come before us, I think as a as a body, we've done our job to when it was in the best interest of the community, think about ways we could compromise when it was with that, when it was outside of what it should be. And I I feel like the whole the whole approach of this. It feels like it feels like we're being bullied. I I'm sorry, I it just seems to me that it's not it this whole application is not with an error of cooperation. It's with an error of, let's just say, this and this and this and this are all wrong. And maybe we'll get away with one of them or two of them. And I also have to say that that some of the things they're saying don't don't stand up were put in place in part by the very planner they're using. He was our former director of planning when a lot of this went into place. So, I mean, that seems unethical, but anyway, I just had to say that in my opinion, that because there's such a lack of spirit of of cooperation, and it's clearly not in the best interest of our community, because it's not, it's not following. I mean, obviously, we've been planning debacle for years. Obviously, the the parks piece was planned for years. And for them to just say, no, that it doesn't, you know, it doesn't suit us. I say we find the thing that's got the most sticking power that doesn't work and just choose that and be done with it. I I really, that's where I'm at. So thanks for listening.
All right, before I go to the to the next two hands, thank you. Commissioner McLean Wenzel, I I agree. A phrase that's come to my mind and just kind of summarizes what you just said is finding the Achilles heel. And focus focus on that. I I have an idea what I would propose it to be, but I want to hear Don. Commissioner Carlton, you were next with your hand.
Yeah, just two two quick things. One is, I think we need to be clear, the the clear and objective argument is completely separate from the plan incorporation argument. They are two separate things. So let's keep that square in our mind. The other one is this area is S F R, correct? And I'm looking at their plot, and there's all kinds of lots in here.
That is that is incorrect.
Yeah, it's a combination.
But that's actually incorrect. It's it's a it's a mix of different zoning classifications. If you jump to the staff report, I believe it's C three, R one and R two. I'm just doing that off the top of my head. I'm not looking at anything right now. Yes, that's what the three zones are.
Yeah, I guess maybe.
Sorry to sorry to interrupt you there, but I I just didn't want to get going down a well, it's R one, R two and C three.
Yeah, maybe I don't have the right. I guess the right zone map. Or maybe the the latest one, but maybe that was changed when we were working on this before.
Finding five finding five from the staff report, so page three of the staff report, the, you know, the thirty some page document that actually lays out what the different zones are and what the acreages are associated with those. That'd be that'd be a good spot to reference.
And it R one does allow for single family. So that just maybe that's where, you know, that comes up.
No, I guess, you know, the the two is a different versions of yellow. And so that's was a little bit confusing because we have you in S F R, you have to have seventy five hundred square foot lots. So, I mean, I agree with Hollis, you know, I mean, straight up, I think the parks thing, David lined out quite well in terms of an oven, a reason that we would provide, you know, for that. And I think the only the main other thing to focus on is debacle and us understanding what would be, you know, we wanted to go through what is our criteria if we deny it that they the state.
Okay, Commissioner Maton.
All right, I just I just have a little bit of comment and feedback. I have to listen to everyone and review that I did on on it. But then I first I had a question for David. On seventeen one hundred point six oh, the criteria for approval. There's six items listed there. I guess my question's more general. Do we have, if if they don't meet any one of those through my lens, am I able to deny using that as a standard, or do they have to not meet all six of the criteria?
Make sure I'm not muted. I'm not muted. Okay, great. Let me just get to it so I don't speak completely from the hip here. Seventeen one hundred. I think you're referring to seventeen one hundred sixty subsection E, right, as in Edward, right?
Conditions for approval.
Yep, yep. And so if if an applicant doesn't meet any one of of those, then that's a basis for denial. An applicant has to show compliance with 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 all. I guess there's seven that are listed there.
Thank you, David. Unfairly, I knew the answer to that question. I just wanted to grab the public record for when somebody came back and listened to this, they would understand that. With that being said, I I believe as a planning commissioner, our responsibility is to balance the staff analysis, including the department goals and the policies from the city, along with community input. And we have to render a decision based on the findings of facts that are provided to us. And we use the outline code. As everyone has mentioned, I can go through it, and I can pick some of the same topics that have been talked about previously, but I won't. But as I I look at the at the entire package in itself, I find, Sharon, that they don't meet the simplest of of terms for the approval of conditions. In fact, as I reviewed five of them, I would say that that's our basis for denial, the seventeen one hundred sixty. I I don't I don't believe they meet any of the criteria in which the intent of our code was set forth as Commissioner Losowski had said earlier. It doesn't meet the plan and the details of which Commissioner Carlton represented when it came to T S Ps or even our comp plan or our street plan. And then to Commissioner Wenzel's comments about the the parks. It's in its entirety. It just doesn't meet the criteria as The criteria is, I think, that are are set forth within the code. Now, I do have a lens for the applicant. I understand what they're trying to accomplish. I think that their indifference is with the code itself. And I think that's a bigger topic for them in a in a future. A future place in time to have corrective change to make it more the way the community wants to see it, not just this one applicant. So with that said, I I hope that you understand where my positioning is coming from, and I think that the seventeen one hundred sixty E. Offers enough credence for denial.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Carlton, your hand is up.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for Christian Maven. In in reflection on that, just as a, I want to call it a alert moment or whatever. One of the things I did today was, like I said, I went through every one of the sections of the code that the applicant says, you know, doesn't, you know, but the problem with. And I, you know, build a seven page document and you hit one right at the top. And just for us to understand, because I mean, I probably they'll probably appeal if we deny. If you look at all of them, particularly the scene number three, it says the proposed street plan is connected and consistent with the comprehensive plan or the official street plan. They're going to say that 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 doesn't apply because consistent with, they say, is not clear and objective. You have consistent with and number one and number two. So I just want to point out. That, you know, that is their argument. They're saying your approval criteria. Are not clear and objective. So we can state them, but that's exactly what they'll come back and basically say. So I just kind of wanted to share that because that's one thing I picked up. You know, after going through all of the code and looking at all of the yellow things, I could take a piece of paper and write down the five or six or seven. Phrases that are repeated throughout the code that they say, you know, et cetera. You know, and some of those phrases are there running for a good reason, others are there and probably can be deleted and wouldn't make any difference in the sentence. You know, just the prerogative of the writer. So. There we that is the crux of what they're basically saying, and I agree with you, Commissioner Maven, that's, you know, that's probably what we would would do. Because number three is is where you would state on the debacle thing. I'm not sure which one of them would be for the. Parks, other than just stating they're not going by seventeen dot eighty six. I leave that to David to help us out.
Yeah, I so that, you know, one thing that. This is these approval criteria relate to the subdivision chapter seventeen one hundred. As was noticed, you know, as is true of of many applications, including subdivisions. It it's not the only chapter. That applies, it's not the only criteria. These are criteria that relate to seventeen one hundred in the subdivision chapter. So. Seventeen eighty six and the the parkland requirement. That's its own separate. Set of approval criteria.
Okay, Commissioner Losowski.
Good. Unmute myself. I was wanted to add on the, I thought I did a fairly good job of summarizing, but I think. Commissioner McLean Wenzel did even better job of the how I feel about it. So I echo her thoughts. But I wanted to go through Jerry, he should be Commissioner Chairman, and ask you what you thought. You're you're sitting here organized, yes, but. I really value your input. So if I can. Ask you for your thoughts.
No, you knew they'd eventually come out anyway, but. The, as I use the phrase, the Achilles heel, to me, the parkland was was that issue to me as I looked at that. And read the code. It was. It was kind of obvious to me that that way it was clear and objective. I think that, you know, the city at the cities, I don't have it open right here. Cities discretion, they can or they can't. We know that the the parks are planned there and the fact that. They just don't want to do it is. Doesn't doesn't fly with me. And then to add to that, what has just come into the discussion, I also have, I had a sticky note in the code. Commissioner Maton to. Seventeen one hundred sixty E. I have a little sticky note pointing right to it so I could get to it because I kind of felt the same way. And I believe as Commissioner Carlton has said. The point number three about the street pattern is 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 connected and consistent with the comprehensive plan. Well, it might be argued that. Consistent is a subjective word. I just can't believe that when you look at the proposed plan and you looked at our comprehensive plan and transportation plan. And the longstanding desire of the city to connect debacle that. It is just not consistent with it because the way the way those lots are laid out. It's the death knell to debacle going to twenty six. It it just it kills that project. I don't have the actual plan, but I remember looking at it before and thinking. Well, realistically speaking. It's not going to happen if this goes through ever unless it makes some some strange movement. So that alone, it just would say it's not consistent. It, you know, it may not, it just, it's impossible to to be to fulfill the the desires of the comprehensive plan, the transportation plan. So. Those two issues. Are where where I've landed and. And I think we can, we can focus our attention on there as as David has said, the the thing with. Debarco may be the the weaker of the two, but still I believe. That in a general sense, when you look at the plan. It is not consistent. I just, I don't see how you cannot say that because of the the way it's laid out. If they had brought it up, you know, I I've wondered about. Even if there was a plan that would take debacle up and stub it off near twenty six and then wait and see if the city would pick up the. The difference like they're doing on three sixty second, but that couldn't even happen with this particular layout. So I'm going to go back to, I've got three hands here. I'm going to go to Kelly first since. He may have some something.
Yes, it's just a it's just upon a clarity. And again, as always, David, correct me if I'm wrong, but the debacle road extension is actually in the T S P as a project. It's also in our capital improvement list. I believe it's actually reimbursable. For the upsizing between a local street and the required T S P street. So, you know, if they built. A local street to the highway, that part would be on the developer, but any upsizing requirements. Would be reimbursable through. S D C credits. And so that that's why I'm a little bit confused about the Nolan Dolan analysis that David mentioned because we would be. Compensating them for the additional road requirements.
To be clear, I wasn't saying that it wasn't proportional or that it didn't satisfy. I just, the analysis is, it it's where it fits in where you even start discussing it. And so. We haven't even gotten to that point because there's not a a connection shown where we'd be able to say, well, okay, does that. Not only meet what the code says in terms of connection, but. It would it be proportional, but we aren't even. That isn't really coming into the to the to the discussion or the analysis because there isn't a connection shown. I would agree, Kelly, that if it's on, and I think there was a an allusion to this earlier during either your staff report or maybe during the first hearing. That. The the a a project that's on the C I P. Is eligible for. Credits, system development charge credits. If it's if it's built bigger than, you know, in this case, a local street standard, that's that is true. I just don't know for certain that it is on the C I P, but I. I certainly have no reason to think it wouldn't be. It's.
It it is on there, and it was one of the three roads that we were trying to build with the gas tax. Referendum, and that was denied by the voters. So I I think it's actually not only on there, but I think it's been on there for decades.
That wouldn't surprise me.
And I and I think there is a, not to belabor the point, but I think there is actually. Information both in the staff report and I believe the public works directors memo on this in the record.
Okay, Commissioner Losowski.
Unmute myself again. I'd like to, if if we've gone, you know, roughly close to an hour now on this and. Be it that the parks is a little stronger case than the twenty six, I think you're both extremely strong. In terms of their. Not applying anything to it or it can't hold it real well. It just doesn't apply to me, so. I'm going to forget about it. But I think we should, just to. Help us through the night, let's make the the recommendation, we pick those two and craft a motion around it for denial. Those seem to be the two strongest ones, or we can, I mean, we can continue to debate on 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 it, but. Or pick pick more, pick pick one of them. But I I would like to see more than one go through on it. There's even more, but. I don't know. So we we get into more specific, more specifics, if that's what David thinks we should be doing, et cetera, but. It's it's just, it's pretty clear to me.
Oh, I would, I would just say that that, to the extent. The planning commission feels that there, you know, whatever that basis might be, if a if a commissioner looks at a different. A different standard and says, wait a minute, you know, does this affect the analysis or if it doesn't even relate to. To debacle or to the parks, but it's something else, let's make sure we talk about those things. And I don't mean to presume that there is something. I think those are the two main issues that we've been, you know, sort of front and center from the from the get go, but. Whatever they are, if a commissioner feels that there may be a standard that either isn't met. Or, you know, feels that, no, I think it is met for this reason. You should talk about that tonight. Just get that, you know, quote unquote, on the record. For discussion. And then that way, you know, as we've done in the past. You don't need to have, you know, whether you're going to approve something or deny something. The direction that you give to staff and to our office is really a a description of why. We would come, obviously, and and write up that approval or that denial with, you know, findings in an order that would be typically brought to the chair for for signing. So. You know, as ever, you don't need to have. You're not going to have to be responsible for writing the particular findings. It's more a matter of just making sure you're you're talking about whatever those those issues are, if there are concerns. Beyond the park and beyond debacle.
Well, I mean, that's a great question for all of us. Is there something else so we can hone in on what we need to?
All right. Hi, anything else, Ron?
No, thank you.
Okay, we will ask that question, but Commissioner Carlton has had his hand up.
Yeah, I agree with Ron. You know, I'm I'm real interested moving forward. You know, just one quick thing, you know, I'm looking at the plan right now, and if you look at lots, three and then nine through thirteen. You look at the lot sizes and all that, it's it to me, it's quite clear. They deliberately made those larger so that they would destroy. The debacle connection. You can move those back and you're just looking at it and other, there's no problem getting fifty five hundred square foot lots. There. And is they want, I I know they, you know, they've got this designed where they don't connect the park. And even if we didn't see a dedication of parkland that went with the existing. Pure point area, there's plenty of land there that they could, they could dedicate. So. I would ask David basically for the comment. I I think we need to focus on both of them. We just focused only on park and not on debacle than that. You know, then we that that would not show our intent and become an appealable part. So, I mean, I understood what you said, that we feel you free comfortable on defending on the park side. Based upon what Kelly has said in terms of, you know, where we have all of the places that debacle is in. If you comfortable defending the 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 city, I have a sneaking feeling this is going to go to council anyway. If we deny it, but. And again, it's up to them, of course, to make that that final decision. So. That's that's, I'm interested in, you know, helping us craft a motion around those two key topics. And because I think those are the the ones that, if anything else, if you push it forward, somebody's got to make a decision. So you just keep bumping it, but ends up a lube, heck, it ends up a lube. And eventually, you know, you get an answer to the question. But Kelly already has a plan to be looking at the code and trying to make it better. So. Now, and and something is going to take a little time.
Commissioner Losowski, your hand is still up. Did you? Okay, I don't know who turns those things off. And Kelly, yours was up a little bit earlier and then went away. Did you?
I I I was just going to say it is in the capital improvement plan, and I know this has come up on this project every single time we've looked at it. So. It's it's no, it's no new evidence. It's no, it's nothing that's not already public knowledge. It's right on our website. I think it's even project number four on there. So I I just want to mention that it is in the C I P, so it is, it is reimbursable.
Okay. Kind of bouncing or springing off of what David mentioned. I do want to give opportunity, if there's any other points, as you did your study. That you felt were significant points where they were, the applicant. Perhaps is is not where we would want them to be. That you would like to enter into the discussion. Raise your hand. Okay, I know, I know. Oh, is that your hand? Okay, Commissioner.
I couldn't find it on the screen fast enough. So I'm I'm just taking my short notes here. You know, when I looked at the staff's recommendations, their eleven list criteria, I had four earmarked myself. The first one was number one, which was the approval criteria that I felt that they did not met, which I I brought up when I spoke earlier. And then number six, which was debacle, number eight, which is the water feed, and number eleven, which is parkland. So when you asked if there's anything additional, Chairman, I would ask you to include number one, the criteria for approval. Because by by necessity of them not meeting. Any of, or at least one of those below listed recommendations from the the planning division. They're they're not meeting the criteria itself. So I would add the seventeen. One hundred sixty E approval.
Okay. That's that's what I was actually thinking of on that the debacle road issue integrates into that.
Yeah, that's number three.
Yeah, under under number three, that that's where we would raise that issue in our. In our comments.
Unless, can I ask David one quick question on that? Do you have seventeen one hundred sixty up in front of you there?
I can get it real quickly. Hold on.
Well, I I like your, since we're talking about it, I think it'd be good to focus on that.
Okay, I have it now. Yep.
Okay, so as far as an a. A code criteria to justify the. The debacle issue. Number three. The proposed street pattern is connected and consistent with the comprehensive plan or official street plan for the city. Okay. The applicant has already said they think the word connected and consistent with or are not clear and objective. And they focus on. And they focus on the comp plan as not being adequately integrated. My question is, if we state that. Do you feel comfortable defending? That as our reason? Or denying Debarco?
Yeah, certainly. I mean, I, I guess what I, I was trying to communicate, maybe I didn't do it that, that well, is that. It, it, to me is, is absolutely from a, you know. Straight face, what's the law say? I think that's, that's defensible for, for sure. I guess it's, you know, the, the, it's a matter of degrees with all of these things. That's the unfortunate part. Um, it's a lot like what Luba said about. You know, trying at least with clear and objectives, like. There's a, uh, you know, there's some exercises that are, you know, um. Few things that are less, less clear or more subjective than trying to determine whether a standard is clear and objective. It, so it, it, I, I guess sometimes I, I get, um. It must be frustrating for clients. It's frustrating for me because. These things, if you look at their case law on, on these issues. You'll find some that are very supportive and some that aren't, and oftentimes with these sort of ones that just fall in the middle, and that's a lot of these standards. Uh, i- it isn't very easy to give, you know. Yes, I think that's a, you know, um, maybe more like the park in my mind, just the way it's written, but no, certainly, I think that that's. Defensible. Uh, it's just a matter of whether, you know, uh. Somebody else like Luba would agree with me.
How about, um, the, um. Christian Maven talked about one. One is the proposed subdivision is inconsistent with the density setback. And dimensional standards of the base zone. My question there is, by including that, they have the word and. The, um, the staff report says the issue of setback, they, they're saying that those lots. That would be on, um, boarding Debarco. Don't have a setback, others, they're not honoring the proposed right away. You follow me? Since the word and is there, we're only. Talking about the setback part, there isn't a problem with density. Or dimensional standards, so. Is it better to just use three? And not include one in the motion?
I still. You can hear me, right? I'm not muted. Okay. Uh, I guess, I don't think it's a, it's a, um, I guess that gets back to my, my comment, um, from a few minutes ago, which is. If there are other issues where you feel there might be a question. Uh, if in fact. Sounds like it, the planning commission is sort of heading towards a denial. There's no reason not to include. Um, a basis, maybe under, um, E one. Uh, as an additional reason. So, you know, and I guess I would say that, you know, the motion itself doesn't, um. You know, just by mentioning that in your discussion, you know, we would pick that, pick that up for, for an order, um, should we get to that point, so. I think it's fine to, to, you know, include that as a basis, um, if that's where the, the commission is heading.
Okay, well, I'm ready to make a motion, um, but on a procedural basis. Um, I think you earlier talked about. Um, you know, Jerry, maybe we need to take a straw poll or whatever, you know, the applicant jumping in, no, so. But like I said, uh, I'm not. At this point, do I make a motion and we don't vote on it to pick, to trigger that thing, or how does that work?
That would be an option. Uh, I think it's maybe just a little cleaner, um, if, um. You know, you just do, you know, show of hands or, uh, straw poll, however you want to term it. Uh, which way, uh, commissioners are, are leaning. I think that seems pretty obvious from your discussion, but. Um, and then at, at that point, I would suggest we, uh, allow, um. Uh, the applicant's representative, I know that. It's, as I said earlier, Mike Robinson isn't here, but his partner Garrett is here. Um, and, um, if that's the case, give them an opportunity to. Way in under that statute, so that's the way I would do it. It's just. Sort of informally at this point. And, and then depending on what their response is, you might go ahead and actually have a motion tonight and vote on it.
Well, the reason I ask that is. Unless we have a motion which gives exactly the reasons that we would be denying it. The applicant doesn't know what to respond to. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it, it is.
So my thought was, is. You know, either way, you know, make a motion. You know, you can take a straw hands without a vote, Jerry. Or whatever, but that way there's something concrete that the other side has to respond to other than our discussion. Cause my, I, I was gonna simply throw out, I moved that we deny the application, give the number of it and all that good stuff. Due to lack of compliance with. Uh, chapter seventeen dot eighty six. And the lack of compliance with chapter seventeen one hundred sixty. Subsection E. Subsection one and three.
I think that would be a, a, a really good way to sort of phrase that motion. That's kind of what I was indicating, if you. You don't need to, you know, go into too much more detail than that. Um, and that's fine. Yeah, I think, you know, it, it makes sense to. Throw that out and use that as the basis for a, a straw poll, if you will.
Well, that was my thought. You said we haven't done it, but then, not doing that, say, okay, if that were the motion. How would you kind of vote? And if it's, uh, you know, looks like denial, then you go through what you need to do.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
What'd you say, uh, Commissioner Mayton?
I said, it sounds like you just drafted it for us, Chair.
Yeah, I was going to summarize it in the same way without a motion, so. Uh, Commissioner Carlton has made a motion and what we would do. Is. Get a, I, I don't know if we need to have a.
Yeah, I, I would say, and I hate to, you know, just by virtue of Robert's rules and everything, once you have a motion, the second. Technically, you're supposed to go and unless there's further, you know, um, amendments to vote on. So let's just say this would be the proposed motion if you were voting.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, cause I didn't, I didn't feel the way that Don worded, he did not make a motion.
Yeah, he didn't make a motion.
Uh, we, yeah, we, and we all under, we all understand that. It's just more a matter of being very clear for the record that we're. You know, not taking that step at this point.
Okay, so a, a draft motion has been, uh, verbalized by Commissioner Carlton. Uh, should that draft motion be made and seconded? Let's, we'll do a straw vote, um, for. Whether you would vote in favor of that motion. And can we just do a show of hands, David, or, okay? So we'll do a show of hands, if you would, if that motion became real, was seconded, was before you to vote. Uh, would you vote in favor of it with a show of hands? Commissioner Losowski, okay, there.
Are you being, are you being coy?
Yes.
Okay, that, that being our, uh. Our tendency or our bent. Then at this point, we would, uh, I'll turn it over to David or to Kelly. To give opportunity for the applicant?
Yeah, I think that's right. I think at this point, then you've indicated that, um, a denial is, is very likely, and so, um. Go ahead and, and allow, um. Garrett Stevenson. Uh, on behalf of the applicant to, um, to respond, and like I said before. They can say, we offer nothing, we're not going to change anything, no conditions. Um, it may be that they say we need to, you know, we need to think about it, so there's, there's a variety of. This is, this is somewhat, you know, unusual, um, and so it's just a matter now of, I think, hearing from the applicant and seeing. You know, if they want to propose any.
I promoted him to a panelist, so I'm gonna ask him to unmute.
Okay, can everyone see and hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, um, thank you, David and Kelly for allowing me to address the commission, um. I, I kind of a second stringer for you tonight. Normally my partner, Mike Robinson would be here, but, um, I guess I. Was lucky enough to, to get to watch all of this, um. So, uh, I apologize if I have somewhat of a lack of background on the case, although I do think I know it reasonably well. So what, uh. What. David was explaining to you was the right of an applicant under O R S one ninety seven, five twenty two, sub three. To offer a condition if you find. Um, that there are certain things. Um, in the application that don't meet the code, which it sounds like you've done. And that the applicant could, uh, basically impose upon itself a requirement to provide, so. In this case, it sounds like there's, um, not a possibility for an approval unless. We have a connection to Debarco and unless we have, um, the additional parkland. I conferred my client and my client's not willing to, um, offer those two things. As a condition of approval at this point. But the other thing I would say is that if there are other issues unrelated to those two that you believe are not met. Um, and I couldn't really suss that out, um. From your discussion, I, what I took away from this was that the. Majority of it was, uh, really focused on the parkland and Debarco connection. Issues, uh, but there, if there are other discrete issues. That you believe we haven't met unrelated to those two things, um, you know, we're happy to. Sort of reconvene, but I, I take it from the discussion that that's not the case.
Thanks, Garrett. Um, yeah, I think, um, you know. Commissioners, at least we've heard that, you know, with respect to those two issues, the applicant is not going to propose a. A modification or a condition. Um, and so on, at least those two issues, you'd be, uh, free to go ahead and actually, uh, vote on that, that motion tonight. Um, uh, but again, that's, that's sort of where I was going earlier with, if there's anything else, just. They, they, I'm not saying there is. I think these are really kind of the two big issues, but. Um, if there were, um, you know, that might be a, a, a thing that the applicant would say, well, on that basis. If you're going to deny it for that reason, we would do X. But it doesn't sound like that's the case. I certainly, you know, wasn't necessarily expecting that you'd have some other. Uh, issue that would, you know, be, uh, for you, but. And that would be the only reason to, you know, further discuss that.
Yeah, that's my thought. I don't, uh, if, if they aren't going to offer. Anything on the two big things that we, uh, landed on. Then even if we picked some other. Lesser things. And they would offer a condition, they're not, they, they've already said they're not going to offer a condition or, uh, alternate. On the, on the big ones. So, uh, Don, is, is your hand up for doing a motion, or did you have a question or comment?
Um, I guess I had a question, you know, mainly for David. Um, and it's kind of just like on a legal standpoint. Because we haven't stated some of the other, um, issues that staff identified, like the eighteen inch water main. Is what I'm kind of looking at now, which is eight. Um, and the justification is to conform with the water master plan. And they're saying, well, the water master plan has not been, you know, integrated. Do we need to state all of those to make sure that those would all be eventually dealt with, or? That that's just, because we're not, where would that be a condition of approval at some later date?
So, you know, the way that we would, uh, always sort of. Approach this is that the recommendation from staff in the staff report, unless. The commission were to say, oh, no, we, you know, we look at that differently, we disagree with that, or we would find. Something else, we would just bet that what's in the staff report, um, you know, with, uh. By and large, is going to be what the, the final order would look like, but with tweaks, obviously, that sort of reflect what you've talked about tonight, so. Um, I don't think you need to go out of your way to. You know, point that out, that you, you know, disagree there. You're just basically following what the staff report already recommended.
But one quick, a point of order, can I, can I, um, release the? Or un-promote the. Um, applicant's attorney?
I believe so.
So just, just again, uh, cause procedure can be everything in the land use context, I would just say, ask, uh, ask Garrett. You know, one last time, is there anything else? Uh, on this issue that he would, he would want to speak to, and if not, absolutely, I think then we can. Let him go.
Um, no, I, I think we're, I think we've said everything that needs to be said, um, and, you know, I think that, just to. I just wanted to say thank you to the planning commission for considering this. I, I understand that there was some concerns about how the application comes across, but. Um, I think from our perspective. We're in a bit of a rock and a hard place, given what happened to the last one, um, that did show these, and so. Um, it's always difficult trying to, um. To guess which way the planning commission is going to go versus the city council, and it looks like there might be a bit of a. Um, a difference of opinion on what needs to happen out there, but, um, we appreciate your work and your time. And, um. Even though, uh, this is not the result that we were looking for. Um, you know, we understand. You know, what's your, what your scope of review is and what your duty is, and we thank you for that. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, and with that, I think we can just get back to, uh, the, the, the planning commission and, and you can. Um, take it from there in terms of whether you want to discuss any further, or whether you want to just jump to a. Uh, you know, I guess formally making the motion and then having a vote.
Say, are we ready to upscale that, uh. Draft motion to a bona fide motion? I'm, I'm seeing thumbs up, so, Don, if you wanna. Do you want to repeat it, or do we just need a second? It's on the record. I believe you said it.
Yeah, I would say, look at, um, Kelly or maybe Emily to. If she's, if she's got it, okay, I, the only guy didn't do is throw in the, the tree number, you know, that. You know, be, you know, motion point file twenty one dash oh one four, sub. Nice tree be denied. Based on lack of compliance with code section seventeen eighty six. And code section seventeen. One hundred sixty. Subsection K, I believe it is.
E.
E subsection E. Um, and further subsections one and three.
That, that's great.
Period.
Okay, that motion has been made by Commissioner Carlton, seconded by Commissioner McLean Wenzel. We will move to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Carlton?
Yes.
Commissioner Losowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean Wenzel? Commissioner Mayton?
Yes.
And Chairman Crosby?
Yes. Motion is carried.
And just so you know, I think I messed up his promotion, so he's gonna have to walk off for me to get rid of him, so. Sorry, Garrett.
There, well, uh, we ready for a, a little break before we.
Yeah.
Get into our little discussion. Okay, let's take, uh, five minutes and we will see you back.
And just as a reminder, if everybody can mute, uh, just so that we don't catch any of that on the. Recording, thank you. And just as a reminder, if everybody can mute, uh, just so that we don't catch any of that on the recording. Thank you.
Well, Commissioner Maite, are are you in the room? We don't. Don't see your video going there. Okay. Everybody's back. Before we move to our um this, the discussion on the bylaws. But I just wanted to personally thank each of you for your um help. I on the on the Planning Commission as a group. Um, I was thinking as I was driving over to the office tonight for tonight's meeting and praying for wisdom and so forth and. Thinking that, you know, I don't have the complete skill set. I don't know that anybody does to. To uh do all that the Planning Commission is uh needs to do. And I I really depend on each of you and you all bring um a skill set to the table that is. Deeply appreciated. And I just, I wanted to say that. I'm sorry that uh two of our commissioners are not here tonight. And I did see your email from Stephen Kelly. Um, but I do want to thank you. It's it's a great to to work with you. So with that said, we will move to our discussion, little bit light discussion on uh bylaws. And Don's gonna, he's done a yeoman's job of um. Before he stayed all day working on the the hearing we just had, he uh he and I worked, but actually, he did most of the work. Uh, last week on um. Some potential bylaws. So I'm gonna let Don, I give him the floor to kind of give us a brief um. History on where we're at and why we're at there.
Um, you know, thanks, Chair Crosby. Um, I wanted to just share two quick things. One is I mentioned it in the discussion on um our past topic, but I would encourage us all since you have the packet. Um, if you can kind of capture out um exhibit X, which is a a long letter with attachments. Uh, February eighth, I found that valuable from applicant's attorney. I mean, he basically, it it talks about, you know, includes all of some of these court cases he's talked about. Um, you know, Lubbock cases, I would say, he's gone through our entire code, and at least on his opinion, he's highlighted stuff. I thought, you know, um, I would, if he was on, I would thank him. I mean, it's his opinion. But, you know, uh, that's something that um I think that we, it would be good to be aware of. Because, you know, we may see this again. So I want to make sure you kind of, and then something is nine hundred pages long. I'm sure you didn't read everything. I know I didn't, but I felt that was kind of key um to basically um doing that. So. Um, uh, I'm gonna do hopefully just two or three minutes. What I wanted to do is. Uh, if I just explain to you my little trip that I went through, um, it'll, I think, help you understand why you have what you see in front of you. And um, my my make it go somewhat kind of quicker. So when I took this on, uh, Jeff, you know, our city recorder was very helpful. Um, he he guided me to some stuff and so. What, you know, what happened is back in two thousand thirteen, uh, in uh, the council passed an ordinance. Which established um some sections in chapter two of our code. And um, there's a section, you know, for uh the Planning Commission. But what's important to note is there's a section called two point one five boards and commissions. And establishes all boards and commissions. That would be the Parks Board, you know, all of these um others. And in there, they talk about things like terms of office and vacancies and election of officers and meetings for like a quorum. Other is general stuff. The very next section was two point one six Planning Commission. Um, and then, you know, other sections were library board on and on and on. So that was in two thousand uh thirteen. There's some stuff there, but I mean, that ordinance, he's got me a benchmark. In two thousand seventeen, the they passed an ordinance. All it did was one thing, and it um changed residency requirements. Um, that is uh in two point one six, and it said, uh, they had deleted a sentence that said, no two non-resident. Members shall be from the same category defined in subsection B. Okay, so. Uh, you know, uh, as far as the members on the Planning Commission, five have to be city residents. And then for the two non-residents, um, one, you know, they could live outside of the city, but. Have to live on this side of one hundred eighty first. Um, and then another one, you know, in the urban growth boundary. And they changed that, you know, so that the two non-residents could just be. Uh, on this side of one hundred eighty first. So that was like one line strike in in an ordinance in two thousand seventeen. In two thousand eighteen, in May, the city council, you know, their wisdom. Basically said, you know, whereas a bunch of these boards are advisory, they don't have any decision-making responsibilities, financial authorities or anything. They thought that they shouldn't be defined in the code. They should be simply created by council resolution. So, um, ordinance two thousand eighteen oh six basically took all the boards and everything we have. Except the Planning Commission, and it took them out of the code, took them out of chapter two. Okay, um, and um, it also took out section two point one five. The problem was two point one five member had things like quorum and election of officers and members. And so now all of a sudden, two point one six, which was planning commission was kind of left without those things. Okay, in other words, incomplete, because they left to, they left the planning commission in. And if they would have moved over some of those things from two point one five before they've got rid of it, it would have been a little bit more complete. But, you know, we all were doing our stuff. We knew what we were doing, you know, no big issues or problems. And at the same time, one day later, they basically adopted something called Admin one hundred. Which, um, so you may have heard about, but, you know, attempts to basically talk about, you know, the planning commission, the boards and all the rest. And it was somewhat more general. Fast forward to two thousand twenty one ordinance number seven. This is the one where the um spearheaded by our city manager, you know, kind of etcetera, basically says, we need to get organized on this stuff. So essentially, you know, this was passed. Um, and signed by the mayor. I don't know exactly the date on it, but it's it's two thousand twenty one oh seven. And it basically gives some definitions. It defines the statutory boards. And basically gives the board seats and terms and seat vacancies, which were in two point one five, remember, and got eliminated. So that was just making something there. Talking about public meetings, says all these boards and missions need to have bylaws. That's just why I brought it up, you know, a meeting or so ago. Okay, because of where our bylaws. Because it says the bylaws need to contain your attendance requirements, the quorum requirements, procedures for electing officers. Member qualifications, you know, et cetera. So some of those things actually were in chapter two. Others are actually in the code. Okay, um, and some things were not of there mainly because remember they were in two point one five and that got eliminated. Okay, so that said, um, basically, the other one thing was section seven is member conduct. You probably remember, we know the code of conduct that the, you know, the council basically has. And basically says everybody needs to go by the the code of conduct. Okay, so that also established the liaisons, which is why we have a council liaison, which is great. And um, no, et cetera. And subsequent to that, um, Jeff pointed me. Four of the boards, if you go to the city's website, if you go to some of the boards, like the library board, an example, and you just click on their button. The very first thing you see there is an an icon for a PDF where they built their bylaws. So I downloaded and looked at, you know, every one of those. So, but for for reasons to the council or. Maybe David knows for legal reasons or whatever, the Planning Commission is a decision-making body. So it was, uh, you know, it was left in the code. So there's a reason that it it's in the code. And wasn't, you know, abolished and then brought back by resolution. Now, in the one one email that I received and going back for Kelly and Jeff, et cetera. You know, he said, well, you know, we come up with our bylaws, the council probably will abolish chapter two uh point one six and um. And do it, but you know, we'll have a separate document. To me, I don't care. It's all words. If they want to keep chapter two. Great. If they want to eliminate it and build a document, I'll just get a glass of wine. I can whip that out in about a half an hour. It's just word processing, you know, it's just formatting uh of the same words. Okay? So that's why you, if you're looking at what you have, why it says planning commission two point one six. Is my intent wasn't to eliminate anything that's already there, because remember, it's already code. Can't do that. It's to it's to embellish it, so it meets the requirements of resolution, you know, two two oh two one day seven. That's basically it. Okay, so that's why you see, you know, what you basically um see. Um, the uh, you know, the key things I wanted to be sure to point out is we've had a discussion and Jerry also talked to council. About it, that we were concerned about uh one of the clauses that is in uh. Resolution twenty one or two oh twenty one seven. And on terms, it says basically. All terms, this is for all boards and commissions, et cetera. It says terms are four years in length. And terms shall exist in two staggered cohorts. Approximately half the seats are assigned the same beginning date and end date. And the other half are a different beginning and end date. So actually, section three point three of this resolution. Says, you know, that's the way they they kind of want to do it. We talked about that. Jerry wrote a letter to council. And uh indicated that we were concerned about that, that we think a something like a two 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 one or. Something that didn't have a whole bunch of people leaving potentially at one time, what might be a better thing considering. Like what we were dealing with tonight. I mean, think about the code and all of the rest. Okay, so. Um, you know, like Jerry, just kind of speak to where we are with on that. But but what I've done is you'll notice that um we have inserted whatever is new or changed in red. Um, I have down that members are appointed for year terms that are staggered. Two commissioner terms will end each year for three consecutive years, followed by one commissioner's term ending the fourth. That was, I can't remember if that's your words, your your mind, but, you know, that's not what three point three says. But that's our desire. So, you know, my thought was is this has got to be approved by the council. So if that's our desire and we approve this as our bylaws, we would note that to them. And if they approve it, then. You know, it would, uh, they can decide, you know, David, you know, you know, there's a conflict for three point three. I mean, it's all legal how they want to. Square that up, but um, I put in uh that because if you. What I've tried to do, by the way, is if you read that resolution uh seven, I've done my best not to put anything that's already there in here. If you read the other four boards and their bylaws, um, and almost all of them, they repeat stuff that's already covered in the resolution. Like you'll find a section on, you know, conduct. You'll go by the, you know, the uh city councils, you know, border, you know, conduct. Well, it says that already. You don't need to say it again. You follow me? So I've done my best not to repeat. Um, unless the emphasis might be desired. And so I did have in here, commissioner shall abide by the boarding. And the commission's board of conduct, simply because all the others kind of had it. So it's just kind of an emphasis um on it. Um, the only other thing that I would point out to to, you know, look at, this may be somewhat a little different. Is we do need to put up a section on attendance, and that is something that we kind of didn't have before. Now, two point one five actually had in it that if a commissioner missed two meetings. In a row that were unexcused, then that seat would be declared vacant. I mean, that was in fact, that's all, that's something they, I'm just, I put it, I put that in here, but I just want to point out, that's nothing new. That's something that was a two point one five, but keep in mind, council got rid of that, so they don't have that. But I did, I did indicate, you know, that, you know, I guess one of the questions on the interview is can you make meetings, you know, once a month on Monday nights, right? And, you know, if for some reason excused or unexcused, a person has trouble meeting um those, and I I put in four out of any twelve months. It does kind of mean that there are some conflicts. They're not necessarily good or bad. They're just conflicts like tonight. We got five, you know, we. We sometimes we do struggle to get a quorum. So, you know, regardless if it's valid or not valid. Um, I I base to that in. So anyway, that's my story and I'm sticking to it and I'll shut up now and. You guys know where this all kind of came from. And I guess I would tend to focus on what's in red because what's in black is already in the code. I would point out also that I did discover today that in um, in the code. And where did I write it down? Section seventeen point oh two point two oh, our development code. It says a quorum of planning commission is for people. So planning question stuff is splattered in different places. And so if I find something else, whatever, but. So the idea of a uh a quorum is uh probably doesn't need to be in this here because it's already there. So, whatever.
Well, thank you, Don. Thank you for all the work that you've done on this. And I'm assuming that you all caught that basically the bottom line is, is we're we're mandated to have. Our bylaws. And we could. We could choose to have a separate document called our bylaws, the way the library commission and the parks board and so forth have. And we may end up there. But when Don and I talked that we decided, well, let's start with what already exists. And we'll incorporate all the requirements of the bylaws into. Two point one six. And it doesn't say bylaws, but that's what they are. And I will just, before I open it up to other comments. The the this the sentence right there under two sixteen twenty. Membership. All members are appointed to a four year term using a four year staggered rotation schedule. Two commissioners terms will end each year for three consecutive years, followed by one commissioner's term, ending the fourth year of the cycle. I wrote that. I challenge anybody to try and describe. What we were thinking and and this was. One of our thoughts, because there's another scheme that could be. Three, three and two. And I just sketched out something for myself on a three, three and two rotation. There would be one year. When no new commissioners come on.
Well, that adds up date, Jerry.
Pardon?
Three, three and two adds up to eight.
Okay, then it'd be three, three and one.
Yeah, three, three or three.
It would be the same thing. That there would be one year when there's, there's no new commissioners coming on. But if you do the two, two, two and one. Being that there's, there's four cohorts, as it calls them, for four year terms. That means every year there's new ones. So we're not, we're not married to this two, 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 one. Our consensus, when we met last was we just didn't like the four and three. So with that said, I'm going to. Open it up to to comments, questions, we could work our way down through it. But as Don said, the red stuff is the proposed stuff. And I see Kelly was up there first with his hand, so.
Yeah, the only thing I want to mention is just when you guys are writing the rules, you know, there there are your rules that you're proposing. But just always keep in mind staff time. And so I, I think three, two and two, you know, it frees up staff not to have to go. One year out of every four, not to have to kind of. Solicit applications and set up meetings and go through the whole interview process. So. It would save, I mean, I don't know how much time, but probably a couple of days of work, to be quite honest. So ju- just keep that in mind when we're putting together these rules is that wherever we can save staff time, I'd truly appreciate it.
Okay, Commissioner McLean Wenzel, you're next.
Sure, actually, I was gonna say something to that, to that effect, that having been in management. I I know, first of all, that, you know, the continuity and the succession planning is important, so I'd really like to see it divided up. Over more years than less. So right now, it's, it's. It's twice every four years that the staff has to do that. And I think the three. Years where the staff would do that and then one year off is like a good compromise because I think we need the. We need it staggered as much as possible, but I think that four, three, or that three, two, two. Would be a nice compromise because it's just unlike those other boards, the learning curve for being on the planning commission is so steep and there's so much to learn. So I think that it's important that the city council understand why we're asking for that staggered. And I, I think, yeah, if we could give the staff that one year off, that would be nice for them.
Okay, Commissioner Lusowski.
Um, well, again, Don, thank you for taking the fun. And for all the work that you put into it. And they're saying that I kind of live and die by, I'm usually the author. But it's the same as it's easier to edit than to author. So I appreciate all the underlying work that went into it. One was going back to. Two sixteen ninety. The attendance. And again, this is just. Food for thought is it says that there's X number down here for absences, excuse. Or unexcused, then it says we refer to the city with a recommendation for removal. I will just say, I think we just recommended to the city council, and I would say for removal, it's like. You may, you may want to look in this, it could be health problems, I don't know. And I hate to have it do a review. Okay, you missed four. Now we have, we have to recommend that you be removed. Does that make sense?
So you're just saying refer it to council or let council know we have somebody that's, you know, kind of been missing. And then they explore it, which is fine.
Yeah, and that and that gives a little latitude. If there is some, something that we can't figure out here. And then the other one along with that is I'm going back with Commissioner Mobley. He was here in 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 attendance, but he was unable to participate. In a number of hearings because of his conflict of interest. So that. Was it was it was like unexcused, it was excused absence and he was sitting there, does that make sense? And I'm not sure how to approach that or if we need to, but it was definitely a. You know, again, he was there, but wasn't able to participate.
What if you just, what if you just added? What if you just added, it says of a commissioner is absent, excused. Put in comma, unexcused or must. What's the word here? I want to say unable to participate, but must declare conflict of interest. What's the word I'm looking for?
Recuse.
I I think you said.
You could say something along the lines of, you know, legally unable to participate, you know, that might, that might capture it a little more broadly.
And so that's it on that one. And then. The other two. And they're really short, much shorter. I'm trying to. For the number here. Point one, six, seven. Which was that? Was the election of officers, just throwing out there, Hollis brought it up a couple of years ago. And again, Jerry, you do the best job possible, but I'm just throwing out is. Having some rotation and having some, yeah, people in different seats. I don't think would be a bad thing. So maybe I'm just rather do. Is there, well, two things, one is, should there be a term limit for us? Okay, saying that after X number of years or whatever. That we just get off the merry-go-round for a while, doesn't mean we can't get back on it. But to allow some new blood into it, so new blood. With term limits and or positions held. So that is getting more food for thought. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Ron. And just going back to your first. Comment about. The attendance issue. I think I'm just going to suggest some wording and you can let me know if it works for you. If we just, if it said the commissioner, you know, the one that's not not showing up. The commissioner will be referred to the city council to address.
Perfect.
And just. Let the, let them take care of it, however they wish to take care of it and and actually whenever they wish to take care of it, if, you know. That was just some, some editing suggestions, but. Okay, you've you've mentioned the the one. The one thing on the election, can you throw out two things is term limits, and I assume by that you mean on the commission. And then also, is there a way to to mix up the two officers?
Yes.
I didn't, I didn't pick up on your, I knew you picked up on the officer part, which is easy to do. I'd be a little wary about putting term limits on. You know, on people, given them time, you know, we've had trouble just getting people to apply. And term limiting somebody. You know, the council can always not reappoint you. You know, is my point, if they want new blood, council can get new blood. But, you know, if we had people beating the door down to to serve, I think it'd be fine, but. Kelly knows probably quite well, you know, sometimes you get a bunch of applicants, sometimes you're out there on the street looking for somebody.
Well, I'm really trying to pose it as such a question of, and I've been here for ten plus years, okay? I like to continue on doing it, but at the same time of how. Get another perspective into it, just like our senators, whatever different positions. After a while, we get so entrenched. Just how to, how to keep it fresh or fresher on it and. Again, I'm just posing that out there. I I and I picked up on it, I think it was from those Oregon city bylaws, they had that in there. And it and it forces you into something like that. So I'm not saying to do it, I'm just saying is, I think it's something maybe act the council to look at and then. Yeah, so. So again, my recommendation that I'm just posing as a question to us. Is that something that we should be entertaining and looking at? So.
Yeah, and. I know the, just as an idea of how something like that could play out. And our, the organization I work for. Has a board of directors and you can serve two consecutive terms. And then you must be off for at least one year. Before you can come back on, so it's not. It's not like you're gone forever necessarily. But that's, that's a scheme that could be worked. Into into something like that. But Hollis, you have a hand up.
Man muted, okay. Yeah, I actually was going to say that very thing, the idea of. First of all, I want to say. Thank, I wanted to just repeat what you had said earlier, which is thanking all of my colleagues, everybody here. This is a lot of work and I really appreciate all the diversity of your thoughts and. And input and a special thanks to to Don. And Jerry for the work that they've been doing on this issue. So major thanks for all of that. I also wanted to say that, yeah, when when Mr. Mobley was Commissioner Mobley was on. It was hard, it sometimes was hard for us to get a quorum because he had to recuse himself so often. So I do think that maybe passing that on to whoever the interviewing committee is as an issue. With choosing people is important. But Jerry, what you just said about like two terms on a year off before you could do two terms again. I think something like that would be a good idea. It's so easy for all of us to do the status quo. I mean, just to kind of cruise along. It's harder to make change. And the one thing that I feel like we really need to make some. Improvement on is diversity on the commission. So the community is changing and growing. You know. Ever since I've been on until until Jen Lee came on, I was the only female. And, you know, we have a big Latino community, so I think something needs to be done to try and. Bring in more perspectives, whether they're newer to the community. All of that, so. Just an underscore, I guess, of what Ron would say was saying, but taking it another step forward, another step up there.
Yeah, my my personal feeling is I I think it just, I'm personally just say it's up to the council. If council wants diversity, can, they're going to point them. I mean, they don't, nobody, you don't have any reason to, you know, keep people on or keep people off. You know, basically. The idea of a different perspectives, you know what, you know, we basically interpret the code. You know, there's not a whole lot of perspective, you know, there is, you know, we, we. We, we kind of, you got to know the code and then you just say, well, you know, is it okay to give them a variance or whatever? And that's what we normally do. So. I would just be cautious about. Doing anything that'll limit people that want to participate, let city council do that if they want to do it. But. You know, Kelly, have you, I mean, how many was the last time you had five or six people apply for one position on the planning commission? You know, and where you really felt you had a choice.
Yeah, the one thing I will add to this is I'm not trying to take a position one way or the other, but what I will add to it is I think before. Three years ago, I don't, I might have the years wrong, they all kind of blend together, but I think before about three years ago. I don't think there was really much of a process for existing commissioners to reapply. It was kind of just like, oh, do you want to? Do you want to be on the commission again? Okay, we'll disappoint you. I think that's kind of changed in the last three years. Or maybe four years, and now you actually have to go through an application process, submit your resume, and then you're competitively. Reviewed in. Against the other people that are applying. Now, in saying that, I think people that are on the commission do have a competitive advantage because they have. Experience on the commission, but I I do think it's a lot different than it was three or four years ago, when basically they were, people are just pretty much put on again. I do think it is more competitive now, so. Not trying to take a position either way, whether we shut turn limits or not. I do know, though, from doing this for seventeen years about now, is that right now, there's a lot of interest in Sandy. If the economy slows down. And there's not as much construction, I bet you will have trouble filling the seats on the commission. I do remember when I worked in Plymouth Falls, that's pretty much how it was down there from two thousand eight to two thousand eleven. And we, I think, barely had seven people. And when we did, it was taking warm bodies. So I I don't want to get into this, I do. I am a little cautious about, I don't want to get into a situation where we let some people go that are really interested in serving. And then we get people that are excited to be on the commission, but then their interest wanes. And then we have trouble filling those seats again. And I saw it in Plymouth Falls, I just want to be a little bit cautious about that.
Well, there's excitement, but there's also the experience out of one side of our mouth, we're saying it's a steep learning curve, etcetera. So then we look at what we went through tonight.
Yeah, so my experience in is you you get down there, at least there was a couple of people that came on, very energetic, thought they can make changes. Quickly found out that we were doing most things correct. They were gone after six months and then we had trouble refilling those seats because we basically let a couple of longstanding members go. I I don't know, it's just something to cut, it's just something to be aware of, and I've experienced it.
I think, I think what we should do is, we had debate back, but at least pose to the city council as something that. Where it has run through several of us. In terms of diversity, letting other people in. And, you know, I'm trying to be more inclusive, open on it. And when we look around, there's a couple of us have been around since the dark ages. I mean, and I know what we, I think what we bring to the table, the experience, etcetera. Right? There's no question on that. And. Again, how to keep it fresh. And I think somebody coming in from the outside, it is always hard to jump on. And deal, I have a real strong personality, Don does whatever, and trying to get your word across. And and just in the last year or two, I've been just trying to do, be a better listener. And because again, new people come in, I I think it's hard, it's hard to jump on this thing. With with some of us that have interacted for years. So. Again, that's kind of my was just go back to the city council and they're the ones that have to deal with the appointments anyway, to say, we thought about. You know, whether or not it makes practical sense to do it is another thing. Anyway, thanks.
Kelly, I'm curious with the, we have four. Positions that are open now, the January one, how many applicants?
There's, there's seven applicants for the four positions.
Okay.
So all seven people will be being interviewed.
Uh huh. So that's good.
So, and I just, because this is recorded and everything, I just want to make clear that what I'm basically, what I'm basically saying to just be cautious of is that sometimes when you get people that are new to something and they don't really know what being a commissioner means. They don't have as much authority sometimes to make decisions or to change things locally or state at the state level as they sometimes believe they do. And not just for planning commission, but with different boards and different councils even that I've been a part of. Some of those people run out of energy very quickly. And then when they realize there's reasons why there's rules in place like they are, and that to change them is not so easy. That's all I'm basically saying.
That's why the, the, um, advisor role is, um, is a good thing to have. I don't know that that name is appropriate. Because it sounds like you are advising to the planning commission. It's, uh, there's probably a better term, but somebody who would be interested. We normally, yeah, I, I, we really haven't, I was going to say, we normally offer that to somebody who in the interview process isn't recommended um, by city council. But we have been, um, I think when I came on as an advisor, it was not, I came straight on as an advisor. I didn't try to get on in a role and, and get turned down. If there was a way that we could continually encourage advisors, because then they would learn what you were talking about, Kelly. They would learn, oh, wait a minute, you know, this, if I was in that chair, I wouldn't be able to do what I, you know, to pull the levers and so forth that I think that I would like to do.
Well, that's what two, 2.1660, which has been there forever, as far as I know, it says we have an advisory board.
But I don't know if that's referring to what we call advisors. That's
I think it is.
Cause it's not a board.
Well, that's, that's just, we haven't called it a board. We've called them advisors, but the authority to have the people sitting there and, and recommending stuff to us is there. It's, you know, that's the, you know, maybe change the title to advisors and don't call it a board.
Yeah. I would see that differently, reading it where it says attend all meetings to lend their expertise to the commission in an advisory capacity. That's something I would see where, um, like having Todd on an advisory board at our meetings, that we have somebody out there who's a transportation specialist. I'm going to go to Emily. Good to hear you tonight.
Well, my point is, is read.
Just a minute, Don, I want to, I want, I turned it over to Emily.
Well, I maybe should know the answer to this, but it's more probably a legal question for David. I'm thinking more like an understudy type thing. Um, if we had two advisors and for example, tonight, there were two commissioners that were absent, would they be able to step up and kind of be on the commission for that night? So that there might be more of a role, I guess, um, more of an incentive to be an advisor understudy backup, whatever.
We have actually discussed that and, and kind of, I think we proposed that idea that wouldn't it be nice if an advisor, what we've called an advisor, who was there could help us create a quorum if needed. Not just fill an empty seat, but in, in particular to create a quorum.
I'm just, um, I think it's a great question. I, I was, you know, looking at that section of, of the existing code. Uh, 2.16. And the last sentence says, advisory members are authorized by council to have voting power only in the event of a lack of a quorum. So I, I think that's there. Right now, if the planning commission wanted to, to do that, I think it's probably good to, you know, have some discussion or some sort of criteria around that. But, um, but to take it a step, you know, further, maybe that's where kind of Emily was going with it would be also, well, let's just say, you know, like tonight, there's a, there's a quorum, that's not an issue, but, uh, I think this is where, what Emily was saying. Um, but if there's, uh, somebody that's not present, have that person, that advisory member uh, step in, you know, for even for that meeting or that particular issue. Again, I don't, I, I think it's that, that you could do that. I think that you'd want that to be in the code, um, laid out specifically. Uh, and you know, the, the things you'd need to address with that. Uh, this is maybe where, why it doesn't happen that often, I'm not certain. Um, but would be that, you know, in a, for a lot of the applications that you address, you'd want to have consistency in case there's continuation. So it might present a problem where if you had a advisor that stepped in, like just say tonight, let's say this happened to go out to another meeting, um, when, uh, you know, one of your quote unquote, regular members was back. You had to make sure that the other person come in. So it might be more complicated than it's worth, but I think legally speaking, if it were written in such a way, you could, the city could do that.
Yeah. It says, keep in mind, the first sentence says the advisors are appointed by the city council. So that takes care of that. I don't know, Kelly, if our past advisors, you've just kind of appointed to be advisors, but to, you know, to do that, you know, the, the tricky things are things like, okay, they're on, but then it gets continued. Um, now are they on and the person who can't make it has to not be on. You know, to me, it could get real tricky. I, I would suggest only applying it if you need him to get a quorum, which is for not to necessarily get to seven.
Because, well, that's how it's worded.
Yeah. Uh, because then of course, they would have to stay on. And I guess by default, the person who couldn't be there would have to not be on until that issue was resolved, which could mean that a person was on, and then you have a new hearing. You follow me? So now do you swap, you know, in the middle of it? Yeah. I could say it. I'm, I'm not against it. It's just the devil's always in the details.
I think it's problematic how it's worded, just honestly, because if you're an advisor, you're most likely not going to be as kind of dedicated and as up to speed on everything as a commissioner. And so usually I wouldn't know if we're going to meet a forum or not until like the day before or something. Cause I don't. Uh, today's a good example. I didn't know until today that two people weren't going to be here. So how does that advisor prepare for the meeting and read the 900 pages or even peruse it? I think it's a really, it's a great idea, but I think it's a very hard task to ask somebody to do. Like on this spur of the moment.
I'm wondering if that text about the filling a quorum is from the 2018 ordinance. I'd have, we'd have to check that. Don's probably got those memorized.
Well, all I give you go back. Let's go back to, um, the ordinance from 2013. And let me just see. Playing commission, flip the page. To, to do. Uh, 2.16.60 is a little different in 2016 because it's shorter. The commission may establish an advisory board with such members to be appointed by the city council. Advisory members shall have no voting power, but are invited to attend all meetings to lend their expertise to the commission. That's how we have actually been treated. So.
But it was, it was changed in 2018.
Um, 2018.
Yeah. Well, we don't need to, to, um, chase that down tonight.
Uh, it wasn't changed by 2018 or six, because all it did was, um, eliminate. Um, it didn't, uh, do anything with 2.16. It just got rid of the, the global language and 2.15 and then the parks board, sending it board.
It's 21804.
Yeah, I don't have that one. Jeff is kind of the repository of all of those. So you're right. Um, but what I have is what is, what I do is I grab what's in the code today. And that's what I started with as a draft.
Commissioner Maiten, you have been quiet.
Yes, I have. I kind of concur with everyone. I, as I read through it, um, I want to say that I agree with term limit on the officers. I would vote for two years. And then rotate, that doesn't mean the commissioners are off the, off the, off the, the commission. It just means that they recycle the, their positions. Um, I, I don't know if I'm, my term limit. I, I liked what you suggested chair. I kind of was thinking, um, three term limits. So that that would be 12 years instead of eight. So I, I guess maybe that does sound a little bit long. So I'm open to, to two and then off one. And I, I think my question around that, um, has been asked and answered. It's really about, you know, from my business point of view, it's staffing. How, how many people are applying for it? I know. Uh, when I joined the commission, I was, at least on the people that are on today, I, I'm the newest one. And that was about three years ago. And there was, I think, three applicants. So when Kelly said there were seven applicants for these four positions, my question is, is, um, or my thought is, is are the four current planning commissioners reapplying? That means there's only three new incumbents coming in, um, which would not fill the four seats if they were all expiring their terms. So it has me a little nervous about openings. Um, and then lastly, um, I, I agree with the attendance piece on the, um, the two consecutive meetings, um, with, with unexcused absence. What I'm a little concerned about is the, the four, and I'm thinking it might be one too many. Maybe it gets, should be three. Um, because that's in a 12 month period. Forced is a large percentage of the year. Uh, threes feels really large to me too, but I totally understand that things come up, but if things come up, maybe you should give up your seat. Um, but again, if we have problems getting recruitment for those seat filling, um, it's kind of a vicious circle that we live in. And then as far as advisory goes, I remember when I applied and I was asked and answered if I would be an advisor and my answer at that time was no. Um, because I don't believe that some people want to give the time that's required to be a planning commissioner. Um, to learn, even though that scope of work is greatly beneficial, um, especially if you're younger, in my opinion, an understudy per se, um, where you have the time to give as an older person, I, I don't have a, a lot of time to give. So I had to, I wanted to make sure I could make impact. So having the seat was important to me. Um, again, that's just my perspective. Um, it depends again on the recruitment, the people that are applying for it. If we have a bunch of people that have a lot of, uh, free time and they could spend the time sitting in these meetings in the evening to learn the process, that would be beneficial, but I just don't see the participation in the last three years. Um, people come to these meetings when they oppose something that impacts their lives. And, and then they, they argue that they can do it better. So my hope is, is that those people try to step up in the community and try to join us to ma- make change. And I definitely agree uh, with change. I think leadership does need to change. I've been in business for 35 years. And as a leadership executive leader, um, I like to have change in markets. Um, every seven to eight years, just because new lenses are, are beneficial uh, to everyone, even, even though consistency does feed or, or warrants some necessity to keep people on. So I know it's just a, a bunch of up and down roller coaster. I'm going back and forth here, but it's a, it's difficult, but I, I think finding a midterm line somewhere around eight years is, is good. And then rotating uh, within the commission, the, the seats is important. Uh, just because I think you need to give people different experiences. For instance, if, um, you, you, you went on vacation and Don felt ill, you know, that, that, there's our leadership. And if nobody's done this before, what do we, what do we do? Um, how, how does it, how do we handle it? And you know, I've been on the commission for three years and have, you know, I, I know you read from a paper. You know, the line list that they give you. I don't know anything else that happens. I've never been exposed to it. So I don't, I don't really know. And in fact, I study my own materials, my own way, because that's the only way I know. And, you know, so I think just by being more interactive within the group will, will work out. Um, and, and then definitely, um, you know, I, I, I am, uh, I like the two, two, one. Because I, I think having too many people on a, on a seven person commission out, new fresh faces, I remember coming in, everything was going by me at about a hundred miles an hour. And I was an ABCB, so familiar with construction very well, uh, but not familiar with land policy, uh, in a city. Um, and I was a state worker, so I was familiar with government and processes and how it worked. Uh, so I think I had a little bit of an advantage, but it still took me months to kind of get in the groove of, of how things happen. Um, and there are some major decisions that came across our, our dais in my first six months. Um, you know, big things that, you know, it, when you have to make a, a deciding vote on it, you should know what you're talking about. So there's, there's a, I think just by splitting us up and having us uh, refresh it at two, two, one makes, makes better sense than, than a three, three, one or the four, three.
We said two, two, one, that only adds up to five. So.
I think he means the three, two, two.
Two, 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 one.
Three, two, two.
Oh, I was saying two, 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 one.
Okay.
Ah, got it.
I, I saw in one of the, uh, email exchanges and calls brought up, which is always a great idea was we could enact, we don't need in the violence, whatever, but some type of mentorship program when somebody coming new on to sit down and to, you know, learn, learn the ropes or whatever. Uh, I think that was a great, a great idea. And then again, going back on the term limits, it could be, you know, hey, if there's nobody else applying, you're ending your eight years and they ask you back and you get back in, something like that. I'm just, I get away of just trying to, you know, keep it fresh. And uh, like I said, I like to stay on, but, um, I, I'm really, I think, uh, Commissioner Maiten stated really well, you know, after that cycle, seven, eight years. You know, another set of eyes, but.
But I just want to mention some real fast. I, I don't know how long we're going to go on this. We've been going about an hour, but, um, it, you do realize if you enacted the two term limit thing, there wouldn't be any. Basically, the three of you would be off the commission. Um, and the new, so there's seven people that applied. Commissioner McLemwell would be a candidate still because she hasn't been on the commission for eight years. I think your term's up, right? Yeah. And then the other three people would be, I mean, unless they didn't select one of them, they would be the three people appointed. So.
Well, Kelly, I realized that and I was, um, banking on the fact that this law, these changes wouldn't go into 2022. We were all already received.
So we're thinking the same thing. These, we're not going to affect this recruitment.
Yeah.
For this, yeah, I would think.
I, yeah, I don't know, because I don't know when you're forwarding your recommendation and I don't know when the council would consider it, but, um.
I, you know, my plan, you know, that's why I pushed it was to try and do that, just talk to it because we had the luxury of a two weeks and then another two weeks we'll have a meeting. We can hash out something here. We can do the clerk during night, do the clerical work on it. And at our next meeting, provide the final draft. There's not making decisions at night. That wasn't the intent. Ten was talk about it. And then, you know, we would basically agree at the next meeting in two weeks. And then, you know, we would punt it to council and council can put on their agenda whenever and heck they want to do it. You know, I've, I've learned one thing about this job for a long time is not worry about council, just let them do their thing. That's why I'm not all that concerned about term limits. If they want to get ready, but they're going to get rid of you, you know? Um, and then council makes the decisions. So.
I'm, I'm making the distinction between getting rid of me and just trying to get some new faces in.
Well, the council's the one who wants new faces. The council is the one that we're answering to. They want new faces. They can create new faces. If soon they have applicants in front of them that, that basically do it. So I've just, given the time I've been on the commission, which Jerry's got more time than me, but I think I'm at 15, 17 years now, something like that. I've seen the boom and the bust. You know, been through where we were having in, uh, the 2000s, we're meeting twice a month for an entire year or more. So think about the people that want to do that level of commitment or not. And the amount of time to me that's important isn't the meetings, it's the prep for the meetings. If you really prep for the meetings. You know, like I spent an entire eight hour day preparing myself for tonight. You know, that's what you have to be able to do to dedicate the time. You know, so the reason I'm, I said, I, I do it is I'm retired. Anything going on, I mean, give me something to do. You know, so, um, but on the other hand, I can see like Chris, given your stature and your agency and the demands on you. You know, so, but on the other hand, I can see like Chris, given your stature and your agency and the demands on you. You know, it could get pretty tough, you know, but that's your own personal decision, you know. If it gets to be too much, you can just resign, so.
You're kind of, you're kind of making my point for me a little bit, and so I'm being facetious on it. So do we staff it all? We end up with all retired people? Because they have the time to put into it, or or should we really have a an equal representation of what the demographics of the area are? And participation. And again, if people don't apply. I don't want to really use that as a criteria for bringing it forward or not, is, you know. Again, I'm I'm kind of saying half kicked me off. I mean, I want to stay on and continue on. But again, gain that new blood and that participation there, I think is really healthy. And I, and I don't have the exact answer how to do it. But again, if there's nobody else stepping up. You could be asked back. Again, I'm just floating it out there as as. An idea to ponder. So I know we're, anyway. Re stating what I said earlier, I feel like, sorry.
I just, I just wanted, I I totally agree with with Ron that. I every, he said it better than I could probably, that. I do think that inviting more people to the table, and I realize that we only have. We probably have the four of us that are up. For renewal or reappointment, and then the three more people. But I think it also has to do with this kind of sense that, well, this is who does it, and this is who's always gonna do it. And the community's changing. And one thing I'm learning from my adult children. Is the world that they see and how they, how they experience the world is very different than the way I see the world. Was trained for the world. And I do think we need, we need people coming up, you know. The thirty somethings and the forty somethings, if we can get them on the commission, I think it's important.
Good thoughts. Where, where do we go? We've, we've gotten a couple suggested edits. We've also, I've taken my notes. Of. Just kind of discussion points. That I guess what we're saying is there has been said two or three times, you know, this would be something for the council to consider. We're not at, we're not at the place where we want to write them in. I've, I've written down term limits. Of officers as well as term limits of commissioners as a something to consider. We haven't. The the rotation schedule. Chris kind of was supporting the two, 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 one, which means somebody. The the recruiting process has to go on every year, or the other one we looked at was three, two, two. We could just give those options to city council, and they could, you know, they could stick with their four and three and say, we're happy with that. We're just kind of voicing our opinion. Another thing that's been brought up is the issue of using advisors to fill a quorum could be problematic, and we're not sure that that has been thought through. It's not, I would say that it's not mandated. But it would be awkward to, with an advisor sitting out there, and we need a quorum to. To not do it. And then the one, the one edit, only true edit that I got was, I think we picked up was in the attendance is to word it so that. Delinquent ones are referred to the to city council to address.
There was two of them, yeah.
Yeah, there's two places where that would be.
Well, truncate after city council and just put down to address.
Correct.
The other one was to include above it that if a commissioner is absent, excused, unexcused. Or legally unable to participate for for planning commission being so that we added the legally unable to participate. In there.
Yes.
The only other thing I would suggest, there could, there is that situation a few years ago where we were meeting, as you know, Jerry, a couple times a month on a regular basis. You could always change the the four or the three, whatever you want, and and turn it into a percentage. Other words, you know, make it, you know, three twelves, four twelves, you know, turn it into a percentage. And that way. You started to have a whole bunch of meetings. They're missing the percent of, so my point is, is three or four may not mean anything if you're meeting 24 times.
Yeah.
A year versus 12. So a percentage would get you the same thing.
Going back to the wording on the unless you're not, you can't legally participate. One observation on that angle is. In the event that you have two public hearings. In a meeting or just two issues, and the person cannot legally, as we had with Todd. You know, he'd, he'd have to recuse himself from just the one public hearing. He's still in the meeting and he's still able to give input on other public hearings, so. You know, how do you determine that he could not legally participate in the meeting? He could not legally participate in a portion of the meeting, so.
Add the word portion, all or a portion thereof. I would say if you gotta accuse himself, that counts as a one of the four.
It counts for the whole meeting?
Well, he counts on the fact that he's not able to help us participate on that issue.
Again, if you put that in, to that extent, and then you refer to the city council, they can get into the nitty gritty of why. On it, you know, we, I think we're just trying to figure out so much. I like the percentage. You could roll with, you know, come up with a number and then. Refer to city council to ferret out why this is happening as, anyway.
And another, another way you could approach it, if you were comfortable with this, would be just to to do something that is, hey, subjective. Our favorite word.
No, they're not clear and objective?
No, this would not be clear and objective. This would be basically, you know, if if a if a commissioner, it's basically the judgment of the commission, right? If somebody's routinely, you know, unable to participate, something that, you know, allows for the the remainder of you. To say, wait a minute, we do have a concern here, this is happening. Now granted, and that shifts. It's nice to have something that's objective and clear, because that kind of makes it like, it's not really our call, it's just, this is what the rule says, and so we're passing it on. So. I only point that out for the the commission just realizes that this is, I think you do. How you would craft something like this, if you do it all, is really, you know, up to you. It's not as if you'd need to have some. Numerical threshold before you would be able to make that recommendation. But it makes it harder. I know, you know, on the people that are there, so.
Well, like, keep in mind, it says we're just referring them to the council and letting them know that this person is not able to participate, and then council can deal with it. So we're not making the decision then to be gone or not, but I have to admit, David, you, my, my clear and objective got drilled into my head, so. I tried to make it clear and objective. It's in the code. It's in section two, chapter two of the code. It's gotta be clear and objective, right?
We could open it up like true legislative and put the words may or shall and determine.
How about will?
As a will, we'll just use, the commission may recommend the city council.
Hollis has her hand up.
Thanks, Jerry. So it seems like it's, it's too late. To do a lot of this. I mean, the folks that are gonna be making the decision for. These, the four of us, whose terms are up at the end of the year. It's too late to change it right now for that. It seems like they just need to go with that. Whatever that committee is made up of needs to go through that process, city, city councillors and and whoever. Go through that process and decide, you know, who's gonna start on January 1st. These ideas that we have, I think, could maybe go to that committee who does the decision making for the incoming. Four seats. That maybe after they go through the process of interviewing all of us and the new applicants. That they look over our recommendations and then they say, you know, these are, these are things that sound good to us. This is what we learned through this process, because this is a new process, right, where they're. Interviewing those of us that have been on the commission before and new, potentially new people. So maybe we need to ask that committee, I'm being really overly worded because I'm tired, but. Ask that committee for their input as to what to take to city council for future.
Well, three of those are city councillors, so the committee is, except for Chris is the city council anyway, so.
Right.
I mean, my intent wasn't to change the rules or whatever, to, you know, put something down, they would approve and move forward on. And yeah, my, my whole idea was is that it wouldn't be, anything wouldn't take effect till after the first of the year.
There's something that we talked about that I think got forgotten, and I just remembered it. And it was the urgency to make the change in timeframe this, this time, so that. It would, it would equate to an equalization over the course of the next four years. And so. I guess what I'm asking then, in lieu of that, is, is there a way to change the timeframe? On these new, on these positions? So we have those four positions. And could we do two of those positions for a differating, different differential timeframes of one, one for two years? Or two for two years and and two for three years? Or or version, is that, is that possible? So that the staggering can begin. The bylaws can be a whole. Other topics taken up in January, but can the, can the term frames be changed so that the new people that are coming in? Yeah, they, they can, we're not talking about term limits. We're just talking about the term itself for this time.
Yeah, Kelly.
Yeah, so one thing I, two things I want to point out, November 22nd is gonna be way too busy. You guys have two gigantic land use hearings. I I think putting this on top of that would be way too burdensome. The second thing is. I think it's good to make changes, but I think what you should do is punt this to the January meeting to make your formal recommendation. And the reason I say that is. You don't want to write all the rules that you're forwarding to council when there could be several different new commissioners appointed onto this body. I think they should have ownership and be part of the process if there are new members that are selected. I think it'd be kind of odd to set those rules for them to council, and then say you do have two or three new commissioners that could have been part of this process. And it was kind of rushed, and they weren't allowed to be participatory in that.
And and Chris, to answer your question, I think my answer is, I don't believe that we could start the staggering. Different than what's already in the the resolution, that it would take. Some maneuvering of city council and changing some resolutions that exist, writing a new one. I don't see that happening before January 1st. And even when. When they read my letter, when I was raising the issue of the. The potential problems with the the huge cohort cohort sizes. They were not anxious to change it at that, at that point. So. I don't think that that's gonna happen quickly, and I don't, so I don't believe we could just expect them to do it. Right away, January 1. I think they're gonna sit there and say, no, we need to make a resolution. We need to change this one and. Change it just for the planning commission, because the way the code's written is not just for the planning commission, is for the other boards. All in the same paragraph, and it's probably not gonna happen in a month and a half.
Yeah, the reason that I brought it up was because the next cohort is up in 2025. For those three that are in that cohort. So. Once think about it, nothing's gonna happen for three years. So if they want to get on any kind of a more frequent schedule, they're gonna start now. Because they won't even, if they appoint the next four for four years, they're all gonna go to 26. So when 2025 rolls around, when we're on city council at that time, they can think about, yeah. But that was my point, is if they wanted to go to some other schedule, then they could appoint. Some, a couple people for like maybe three years. That means they would come up in 24, then they got three people. And then, you know, in 25, you have two naturally in 26. And, you know, you you can start it. So once you appoint four people to four year terms now. The issue's completely moot, jury, until 2025.
Well, I understand that, but.
I'll be off the commission by then.
I'm just saying that I don't believe that it's a felt need for the, at the council level right now.
Right.
And we can sit here and say they need to start it right away, but we can't make it happen.
Yeah, I mean, if they don't care, I guess I'm, I'm gonna release from it. I don't care either if they have four new commissioners at one time, that's their problem.
I don't know why they could come back and ask something like, hey, come in here, we have this problem. Would you mind taking a two year gig instead of the four, right? For a couple of people coming in just to solve it, I, I. I mean, I would make that concession type of deal, right? Just to get on the right cycle of it, so.
Yeah, but you're not gonna change the cycle because the the resolution they pass says any new term gets appointed for the remainder of the existing term.
No, he's, what he's saying that there wouldn't be, they would have to change some code language.
Oh, yeah.
If they came back to me and said, hey, we're pointing for a year, and would you do two? Yeah, fine. Just to get in the rhythm, whatever, whatever.
Well, I do the same thing. That's my whole point, see.
But they could do that, they could ask us that in March.
Mm hmm, exactly.
Right.
Well, in March, you already got, you already pointed for four years.
Well, they would be changing it with our, with our permission.
Yeah, with our permission, exactly.
After the first three years.
Right. And we, so, yeah, again, I think it's a, we're making it harder than it is. So same thing is, commissioner, you're coming on board to get things in that the right three, three. Ones, whatever the thing is, would you be okay with doing two year or, you know?
Well, let me, let me leave it at, let's see, if we can wrap it up. Because I think we're, we're all getting towards that twilight time of brain deadness. We have a liaison with the city council. I don't know if if he's been watching or listening. And and I don't even know. How that's supposed to work, you know, am I supposed to go talk to him? And and say, would you listen to this portion of our discussion and and take it to city council? I don't know, you know, does Kelly do that? They didn't tell me.
There are, there are bylaws. My suggestion is we put together our bylaws, we send it to them, they can accept it, change it. I think we're making too big of a deal of it. I think it's up to us, you know, it's, it's up to us to build our bylaws. And send them to council for approval or changing and.
Right, but I don't think that we have totally agreed on what our bylaws should include right now. And.
And I think there's only one thing hanging us up. I think everybody pretty much said, okay, rotating the chair. Once every, you know, two years, then I heard a lot of nods basically on that. I think that's fine. I also know, having done it, that the chair doesn't really have any power. You just get a lot of letters and you gotta learn how to run a meeting. I mean, they don't have any more votes than anybody else, so it's really a procedural job that you just have to run, and so it's fine. So the the big question came up, Ron talked about term limits, and that's what we talked about for this entire time.
Right, no, I've, I've outlined those, those issues that we would. Just that we haven't come to a consensus, and at this time of the night, I don't think we're going to, to be able to put words on this paper to get it into city council's hands.
Well, getting in our hands, we haven't approved it yet.
Right, so I would say that what we could do is, Don, you can perhaps tweak some of the language. And we've discussed some of that, and then it'll come back to us in December. Uh, we meeting in December? No.
You, you're just doing a work session with council.
Okay.
Probably take about three hours, so that's your December meeting.
December 13th, I saw.
Yep, so it would be in our January meeting, we'll, we will, that's when the next logical time to to look at it. Yep, so it would be in our January meeting, we'll, we will, that's when the next logical time to to look at it.
Well, I'll I'll make some medicine, kick it to you tomorrow, and then you can run with whatever's there. Okay, we don't need too many cooks in the roast.
No, is everybody okay with that? All right, we got two thumbs up. Okay. Anything else? I only see one more thing on our agenda. Yeah, begins with the letter A.
I motion that we call adjournment.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded into adjourn our meeting at nine twenty two. All in favor, thumbs, hands, waves? All right, I see that motion carries with with no dissension. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
In two weeks.